Madam Chairman, we're live.
Good morning and welcome to our Wednesday, October 22nd meeting. First up is our Pledge of Allegiance, if you will join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we are working on an amended agenda. So we do need to approve the amended agenda. Have a motion?
I would like that we approve the amended agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Director Derrick, you are up.
Morning. Morning.
We're still pretty busy trying to get ready for the move. Inspections, it's just that time of the year. But we did have our meeting for the new permitting program. We had the launch meeting. In our timelines, everything we're talking about in the meetings, it's all right here, if you guys want a copy to look at?
That'd be great.
In the timelines, there's the end of December. And I want to be, we're going to go completely. I mean, there'll be people that can't. But we're going to do everything in our power. So it will coincide with the impact area, which is good. We can just start and perfect. Hit it hard, hopefully. Make it work. So payment integration is there. There's code enforcement licensing plan. Perfect, well, thank you for this.
Oh, no problem.
Good news.
Is IT good with the online payments portion? I know, I think it's the treasurer's office is struggling with the online payments.
Jeremy and Isabel or whatever her name is was talking about it yesterday, so.
Good, because that'll make things a lot simpler if that's a smooth process.
That would be good. We're excited about it. Excited to get down there.
My lungs have been, gosh. Yay, yeah, we're there.
Hopefully it all, it sounds like it's going to, I mean, they're very well to work with.
Yeah, good.
And all of your team was in training, so everybody's set to go?
Well, it was, that was just our launch meeting yesterday. So, well, the rest of the meetings, everybody will be in there. It was me and Marsha yesterday, just to kind of see what's. And then this timeline, I'll make sure everybody's.
I need to hop over and meet your new employee. Shame on me for not doing that before, but I haven't, I don't hear a lot.
I still brought him in too. He's out in the field with Tony today.
Okay, perfect. Alright.
Alright, thanks.
Director Phillips.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the help yesterday.
Well, as much as that was, so. Thank you for visiting our house and bringing all your friends.
Yes.
So as for what to share this week, I actually just grabbed my list of what was going to be in my staff meeting for next week. So I have a staff meeting usually about every month. Last month was probably the first we hadn't had one. Part of the staff meetings, I usually do individual visits with my staff, see how things are going for them, anything that needs to probably be talked about. So some of the things that were coming up is again, we're still concerned with all of our high, high number of cases right now and how many of those are felony cases that have been pled down to misdemeanors, so then they're in our office instead, as well as some that are coming from other counties. We just have a higher risk caseloads at the moment. So two of our discussions are going to be assigned for no weapons outside. So we're going to talk about as a staff to either just have it right by the front door, because as you come into our building, of course, you'll see that McCall Police Department's, you know, they've got all the cinder block and they've got the safety glass, and we have nothing. And so between the two, there's been some concerns about what they're bringing into our building. And if we do unobserved UAs, for example, we ask them to dump out their pockets before they go into the restroom, because if I'm observing them, I'm observing a male, we'll have them do that, they go and take care of their business, come back out. There's always some kind of knives or something like that out. Same really, probably not so much with women, but women do as well. So we're going to have a conversation about signs and what that looks like, what they would like, what they would feel safer about, just in hopes that they will leave them in the car. Can they still bring them? Yes, but hopefully that just deters that. Second is just risky drug testing. Just, I guess there has to be just a better plan. Someone had brought about just having a better conversation about if someone gets escalated because you're questioning them about a drug test or something. It's never happened. But again, because of the concern of this, these type of folks that are coming in, just that we can have a plan in place of what to do, just in case things escalate. Further conversation is I'll bring the new budget that has been approved for our office, just to kind of go through that with my staff. They can, then we usually start talking about any kind of needs, something like that that might need to be addressed at this time, as well as looking at conferences, what kind of conferences they're wanting to do and if they're wanting to leave the state or not, and if we have that further conversation. Thanksgiving typically, so we have four tens. We have Monday through Thursday and we have Tuesday through Friday. And it's pretty typical that for always that Thanksgiving week, that, you know, the Tuesday through Friday only get that one day off. So I'm going to talk with them this week to see if they would like that the two that work on Fridays, and sometimes me that work on Fridays, that if they just want to all work Monday through Thursday, I'll just cover the whole day, have that kind of conversation. I do have a Dallas trip coming up that's going to the Emerging Drug Trends Conference. It is all paid for. My role is just to be a monitor in one of the rooms, so I get to see all the speakers I want for free in a huge, like five, six hundred person kind of training. So that's in November, and then I'm done with traveling for a while. And then just some connecting back up with the partners in the community. That's going to be one of my focuses while I'm not having to leave and run amok for the winter, is to go reconnect with everybody, sit with them, see how my partners are doing. So that's just a synopsis of what Lisa's staff meeting looks like.
I'm sitting here thinking about the conversation, you know, what do you do if you have an escalation? Is there a panic button anywhere? I mean, that might be something to discuss.
Oh, no, we have one on the computer that up front. So in the panic moment, you have to press the button. But for the most part, we have the McCall Police Department right there, so we can, we can holler. But I think it's just, if anything, it's just having the conversation with our team sometimes just can alleviate that concern and what that looks like. So, and we'll just discuss it and see what they'd like us to go from there. I did have Terry come back out, or was out yesterday from facilities. So years ago, we had law enforcement come through our building and offer suggestions for safety and security. That's when we took the person out of the front and moved them to the back, just and always, everything happens with a doorbell. There was also other things that were suggested at the time, just have not followed through with. There just hasn't been any. So we're going to relook at that and see what we can do to make things more secure within our building.
Any other questions?
No, secure is always good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Director Hamilton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Feel like I have a lot to report on. So the, goes all the way back to the end of September. So the Farm to Table Dinner went really well, it was a sold out event. A fundraising event for the Western Trail Mountains Food Coalition. The pasture management tour also went well, but it was kind of a cold and rainy day. And the people showed up, about ten people at each site. We did one in McCall, or just south of McCall, and then one in Round Valley, just south of Cascade. And the educators that came up to do it, they were also really excited to be up here. And so it was just nice, I'm hopeful that we'll get to do more of those in the spring in a continuation of that series. I attended the American Association for Adult and Continued Education, and that was a new conference for me, it was a good conference. And I had the opportunity to present the work that I'm doing, both with qualitative research and community gardens at that conference. And it was a little more academic than I'm used to, not that extension is an academic, academic is. I guess extension conferences are more kind of practical, practitioner. It feels more practitioner than, you know, here's the theory of it all. And, and so it was good to be on that learning curve with that, that new association. Put things into a different context for me, which is good.
Did you bring home anything that benefits Valley County?
I always bring home, every time I go to a training, I bring things home that benefit Valley County. And just recently, I was looking at another person, Rebecca Southerns, I think that's her name. She was a facilitator that I met at the last conference I went to last year, at the facilitators conference. And she was doing kind of summary sheets, and I usually take notes every conference I go to, just to be able to have that processing time to capture what I'm learning and then make those parallels about how it can, how it can get applied. I haven't synthesized the ACE, is the acronym for that conference, that conference, on how it's going to apply here. But I really liked the spreadsheet that Rebecca Southerns did. She kind of did like this little summary of, I went to this conference, I didn't know what I was going to learn, and these were what they talked about, and these were my takeaways. And so I was like inspired by that, and so I thought maybe that could be something in the future I develop post-conference, just to be able to have that kind of link. So I know on the spot, I can't tell you how I'm going to apply it, but I always do find gems. After that, there was the 4H State in-service. That happened to be in McCall, so we closed the office down and all of us attended that training. And that was one that I always have wanted to attend, but I didn't want to close the office to attend it. And so usually it was, you know, the administrator and the 4H coordinator going, and then I would stay and hold the office hours. But moving forward, I think it's important that I'm at that conference as well. So one more thing to try to fit in, and so if I can, I will, but it was really valuable to be there. The Anvenidos Community Garden Closing Day this past weekend. That is an amazing partnership with Alzars, and they help with the Pride of the Pantry Plot Community Garden, as well as the one up in McCall. And in all honesty, I don't know how, or those community gardens would look or function without their service. And so they've been an amazing partner to those spaces for the community. Also launched the Free Little Art Gallery program. And so last Friday and Saturday, we had one in Donnelly and McCall. And then this Friday, we have one at the Cascade Cultural Arts Center. And so it's really, a really, you know, sometimes you envision things. We wrote a grant, we got an innovation grant from the university to implement, and it's part of supporting the Creative District. And you come up with this vision and you don't know how it's going to look once you get into the room, and it's just been so lovely. And so if you have a chance to come, 5:30 to 6:30 at the Cascade Cultural Arts Center, that'll be our final artist reception, which is really just elevating local entrepreneurs that are essentially carving out a life, doing, creating something and then selling it. And so it's just a nice entrepreneurial highlight. And I learned about local talent that I didn't necessarily tune into. And now I'm like, oh my gosh, I want to commission a painting. So like, there's some really neat opportunity to do, to support some local people here through, through their talent, they're very talented. So come Friday night if you can. The next class I'm promoting is November 8th, which is the Chainsaw Workshop at the McCall Outdoor Science School. And that one is sponsored by Still, and I have a specialist coming down from the College of Natural Resources. And they'll put a chainsaw in your hand and all the PPE and the chaps and all of that. And the Moss campus has a log for people to saw and practice. And so if you know teenagers that you want to practice the skill, if you have anybody that you think just needs a brush up on safety, sign them to this workshop, it's the first time we're offering it. And I would love to see, I think there is a need, and I hope there's local interest.
Did you talk to Citra and Simba about that? Because they do a lot of trail clearing.
I shared it with Dave at one point, and I don't know if, if that was necessarily something that he thought was going to be of interest. But I think it's because there's no certificate tied to it, it's just a training. And I feel like we're just putting it out there and kind of seeing if there is interest. I, I don't know who the contacts are of those groups as well, but I imagine Dave is connected to them. I can reshare it with him.
December?
Yep. Yep.
And then Citra, Citra would be the other one, but they also have to have certification to do work on the forest, so.
Yeah, and so it doesn't have that certification with it, it's just a training. So I'll reshare that, and if there is interest to pass it along, that'd be great. But it is more focused on kind of the homeowner or the steward, the steward, the athlete steward. So I will make sure you guys get that. I was invited to be on two Afri grants, and so I just, we're submitting those in the next couple of weeks. One was focused on entrepreneurial training, and I looped in the Economic Development Council, and so I'm hoping they can get on the grant, and if they do, then they'll get some money to be a partner in that grant process. And the other one is focused on the expansion of the community review process. And I had, essentially my component of that is to develop an online community development mini byte leadership series, which was the, the community development bootcamp that the Economic Development Council participated in as part of the Creative District, but we're rebranding it as the placemaking practicum, or practicum for placemaking. And then there's also a textile reduction grant that I'm a partner on, that I'm hoping to work with the McCall Public Library with their repair fair efforts. And the 4H coordinator position is posted, and currently there are no applicants. And I have the action item here for signatures for the standard extension agreement. Any questions? Sorry that was long.
No worries. I have no problem signing it, but are you familiar with the two ways that we actually can partner with U of I? I don't know that we've ever discussed that.
I think you and I discussed that in our initial meeting, but we can go into it again, so.
No, I just wanted to make sure you were aware that there is more than one way.
Yeah, and so this standard extension agreement essentially is customized to fit the current way that we're partnering. And I think there's just a template that I can share with you, and I think I did. And it kind of says, these are the ways that different counties throughout the state are partnering. And a lot of it is just on, if there's county employees or university employees, I think that's the big.
That's the big difference.
The big difference, yeah. Okay.
Approach. Any questions on the U of I extension agreement?
So the agreement here, the 181, is that county share or is that our share? Yes.
Wow. Up fees for the three employees, and then it gives $1,500 to Melissa's salary. And then a lot of travel expense and reimbursement expenses for gas and that type of thing, so.
So there's three signatures here, the county clerk, and then the chair, this page, and the clerk.
So I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, make sure the U of I extension program.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Who did this routing?
No, I did notice though on your routing slip, nobody signed it. It's not just to type the names in, they're supposed to actually include a signature.
Okay. Do you want me to get signatures?
Did this go through? Okay.
Email, yes.
Okay, that's fine now. I don't, I don't know if they, if they sign or what they do, but.
Terry, you got another, you got another page there.
When are the interviews starting?
When you ask it. This is a copy, this is a copy? You want to copy this? I'm sorry.
I've got it in here, so.
I gotta be the paper.
Yeah. There's a lot. What are we building in this?
I'll just, I have time for a couple minutes to allocate and report out.
Okay.
We could get a lot of time.
Mayor Title.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I can confirm that that document did go through and was signed by myself and legal. I apologize that that did not get included in your packet.
I think it's just the one spot for me.
I can forward that on to you if you would like.
No worries. It just didn't have any signatures, which is not normal. Allison, if you're reporting, you got two minutes.
I'll be quick, I wrote it down even. Just wanted to give you a couple updates that's going on in the 4H world. Recently went to an ILEAD's, that workshop that I did the drones with, taught with a teen leader who helped me do it. It was awesome, it was really, really a great success. And we took $3,000 in drones with us and learned, and we're the first to use them. There we, I also taught youth how to fish. That's kind of a really cool opportunity to get some of them outside. We went to the fish hatchery, it was called Reverence. And the kids just had a great opportunity to learn from the U of I Research Station. Those folks came down and talked about aqua science. And we had a couple kids very interested and wanting to pursue that. And it was just really a great tour and.
Is that where you were fishing? I want to go fish just at the fish hatchery.
No, no, we didn't get to fish there. We went by Shoshone Falls, there's a little lake that they can pond, that they can practice in nearby.
I couldn't even catch.
That's catching fish in a barrel. But they do a really nice job, and it was really neat to see how that worked. Okay, keep moving. All went to, we all went to the statewide 4H training in McCall, and that was a really great opportunity. They had a speaker on behavior management and the Idaho Out of School Network. And it was a refresher for me, but when I came back, I, it was good to work with my team here in Cascade, and we implemented some of the things that reminded us of our behavior plan and kind of that culture we want to have with the kids when we're working with them. So that was really great. And let's see, the after, let's see. We also applied the Education Alliance National 4H Index. That was interesting, I went to a piece there where I learned a little bit more on a national level, what this beyond ready is about, and how can we apply it? And they had a great summarized way to speak to the public that doesn't just have a lot, it just some really strong, like, healthy, productive and engaged. What does those numbers look like? What are the models, what are the demographics? What's our goal? And it's 10 million across the United States to help increase that career readiness and how we can get there, so college and career readiness. So it was very helpful and very productive. I'm going to be at Lights On After School tomorrow night. I've been doing cooking programs in Cascade at their after-school program. I'll be doing all my reporting for U of I. I've got grant reports due for the NRA, and maybe another one that will apply. But that's all going very well. We have obtained the monies for the shooting sports trailer and have obtained the trailer. And there we go. Perfect, thank you.
Allison, down the road, are you guys looking at replacing Aleah's position?
It looks like it's, yeah, it's my position that's been divided, and I'll be applying to soon.
Okay. That was what Melissa was saying, they've got them posted.
Well, they have them posted.
The new, because they switched it, we approved it through the budget process to change those.
Change those positions up.
Change the position.
Okay.
Alright, up next, Director Savoy. Allison, all positions have been filled, totally qualified.
Not even in my dreams, I wish they were. I have some certificates, longevity certificates, would you guys want to sign them now or later? Just four?
Leave them with us and we'll get it between.
Here, I'll just bring them up here whenever you can.
Mr. Thompson, make sure you sign with blue, Mitch.
I don't get it right.
So recruitment is obviously a priority right now. We currently have 17 open positions on our website, and we're actually probably looking at an 18th going on here soon. Some things are in the works there, but the good news is, I can say, I don't know how much you want me to say, but I can say that I can take one of them off probably very soon. I will go that far for now, very, one of our bigger positions. We do have an agreement on that one. So hopefully I'll be able to let you know more about that later this week. We do have a career fair going on next Tuesday up at the Cascade School. That's from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The first hour is just for the students up there, and then after that, it's open to the public. We've got our job announcements posted on our website, we have them on Indeed, we have them on governmentjobs.com, and they're on the Department of Labor's website as well. So as far as electronic footprint, we've got it out there everywhere that we possibly can. And as you know from the applicants that you see, we're getting nationwide looks at our jobs. Just to let you know also, Commissioners, I reposted recently our IT tech position. I'm looking at something a little bit higher than we were recruiting for before. I published that yesterday afternoon, and we've already received a couple of applications for that. One of them is a local, one of them is, I'm not sure which state in the country, I want to say it was from Ohio. So that's in less than 24 hours, we're getting some hits on that one, so.
Good news.
Payroll, the good news there, we have done our first bi-weekly payroll. People have, did receive their paychecks, which is probably the biggest reason why I'm standing here today, rather than hiding out somewhere. We did have a couple of hiccups on those with a few paychecks. We've gone ahead and made the corrections on those already and figured out what it was that happened, so that they shouldn't happen again. There were some weird numbers on the pay stubs regarding PTO balances. I won't bore you with the details, other than to say it was because we were switching from a salary to a, or a monthly to a bi-weekly process, and our payroll system was using the numbers, interestingly, shall we say. The important thing is that the end balance that everybody's showing on their PTO was accurate on their pay stubs. I'm probably going to be sending an email out to everybody today, just to say, look, if you see this and you're wondering about the math, just know that the end balance is accurate. And of course, because people are getting pay stubs that look different than they've ever had before, we are getting a lot of questions in our office about that. What I have told Christina is that our policy in HR is that we will investigate every single person's questions or complaints one at a time, without any, you know, doubting their validity or anything like that. We are taking every single complaint seriously. Even if it's just, hey, can you explain this to me? We are saying absolutely, come on in, we will show you, we will walk through the math with everybody, so. But so far, I am very optimistic about how the transition has gone, so.
Pretty good, so, that's a big transition.
Yeah, it's, I'm hoping to start sleeping at night here within the next couple of weeks, we'll see.
So Christina.
And she's doing well as well, so. But anyway, that's what I've got to report on today.
Tell me about any upcoming, coming trainings. Are we doing any trainings? I know, do you know anything yet? Or we got to wait for the lady that Brian had?
That's the one that I know of, the next one is the, I think that was for the management training that we've got coming through the PA's office, yeah. Alright. Thank you.
Director Herrick, I'll go with you, and I'll see where Jeremy is.
So I, we were one of the people that had the monkey numbers in our PTO, and I have to say, they, they were honored to couple hours to get answers, detailed answers, so. My team was happy with the responses. I have a couple letters of interest for P&amp;Z Commissioner positions, and I'd like to be able to tell people when we will be doing those interviews. Typically, we do it the first part of December. So I'd like to be able to say, what, that first meeting in December? Would that be fine? Today Brittany Brand is doing another series of public engagement. This is the one on the education piece. And I'm going to be in and out of that, because I find it very interesting about how they're working with our schools and maybe training them with some. about how they're working with our schools and maybe training them with some different types of training to get them into the workforce directly out of high school, that type of thing, and see what our students need. So I'm going to watch when I can and participate.
Oh, next Wednesday, isn't it?
It's this, today.
Oh, it's today?
It's today at 1:00. Pretty sure. Yes, today at 1:00. That's what my email said. If not, it's next Wednesday and I won't have to report on it.
Next Wednesday.
Is it next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Wondering why she did that today. Anyway. Well, that frees up my afternoon. We participated in the cloud permit introduction also. It came to our attention that planning and zoning was not included as a module. And so we're going to have to, yeah. It was building, code compliance and licensing. Planning and zoning was not on the contract. So we're going to have to get that fixed and Jeremy will work on that. He's aware of it. And which is fine because we're going to be the fourth training anyway. And I have a question out to them as to whether or not we're going to train jointly or if it will be individual for each module. Because they're going to start with the building portion.
When Jeremy comes in, we'll make sure that it was in the budget then because we had a budget for this that we assumed included everything, so.
So I'm sure they'll work through that. I did register for the Housing and Economic Development Seminar in March.
Nice.
It's one of my favorite ones. It's high energy.
I'll be going to that one too. It is a great seminar.
It is.
Housing and Economic Development, if you guys want another conference to go to. It's a little bit, well, I don't even know that it's all that expensive for what you get, but the ones in the past and I think, did you go to the last one?
I've been to.
Yeah. They have the best speakers with the most information of any conference I go to. That was bringing very high-end speakers.
Thought provoking.
Yeah.
So I like their futurists.
Would you send the details on that?
Future, it's their futurist speakers that are really interesting.
Yeah.
The what?
Futurists.
Futurists.
Future. Talking about the future.
Future. Futurists.
Futurists.
The last, the last one was absolutely fascinating. It made you think outside the box about what could potentially happen in the world. And they were talking about hearing aids. And they said, "You're not going to need hearing aids. It's just going to be an earbud that functions both for music input and hearing aids." They were just talking about how industry will be turning over. So it will be interesting to see if they have another one. I'd love to see what AI is going to do to our world.
Well, they have the speakers listed. Yeah, probably be a lot of AI. That seems to be what everybody's talking about right now. I tried to talk to it this morning and it didn't like me.
That's because you've got to talk nice to it.
You just attitude.
Anyway. As you know, we're busy. We're, you know, trying to get things packed up in between and excited for the move. The only thing will be access to this room that will be challenging for us. So we're excited to get moved, get cleaned up again.
You still have a key in that drawer back there, I think. So that desk was specifically set up so you guys can leave files here. So make sure that you use that, utilize that.
So there's a key? Okay.
Yeah. And then you can access this back room, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a lot of storage back there now? So anything that you need to store back there?
Yeah, we'll be parking some things here. And so that's why some things come up missing after our Thursday night meetings. Some of your drinks and.
No worries.
So, okay. Anything else?
Thank you. Director Wilcox.
I'm sorry. I don't know what day it is anymore.
We're back to Mondays. It's starting in November, so.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
He'll be, he'll be here Wednesday. Where is everybody?
Before we start, who's found out that cloud permitting did not have planning in that?
It does.
It does. Okay.
Yeah. I reached out to, I immediately laughed, I immediately reached out to our sales rep. And the planning and zoning part is in one of the other modules that was listed. But our implementation specialist was, I guess she was used to it being listed separately. So she thought it wasn't. So she didn't add it to on the initial scope of work. That has been corrected. It is there. It is going to be part of the scope of work, so.
Oh, and it is our budget. That was included in the budget.
It is included in that, in that price that we paid. Yes. So panic averted.
Okay.
I sent a very panicked email to our.
Senator was going to send that to you.
Yeah, no, I, I, I addressed that as soon as that meeting was over.
Okay.
So other than that, you know, the move is next, in the next week. So just trying to get everything I can prepped as much as possible before then. At the point where a lot of the stuff I can't, can't do until everybody's down there, so. Just going to be what it's going to be. I did have to. And I have some room if need be, but hopefully it can be included in the ARPA funds for the building. But the big printers, the moving company, since they're on a lease, they won't touch them. So I had to have the leasing company come up. They're going to come up on the 30th and move the four big ones. And they charged 250 bucks a printer to do that, so. There's going to be a thousand dollar charge for them to move those printers.
Yeah, we'll figure that out outside of your budget. So what printers are going to be left here? I mean, where are the four big printers?
So it's the main printer in the planning and zoning area, the main printer in the assessors area, and then the two plotters.
Okay.
A big can in, in the cartography office and then the big kip in the.
So this one's still here?
There you go, Sheri.
Yes, so the, the main one here in the mailroom will stay. So, yeah. So, yeah, and then had a couple of other things. I'm working on, and this might be a discussion at some point because it got missed during the budget negotiations, but with the addition of some of the campgrounds and us getting horse thief, recreation folks are looking at some software to help them help manage and do reservations and stuff over the summer and that sort of thing. So we're looking at some possibilities for that, but it's not something, like I said, it was missed during the budget negotiations. So if we decide on something and they want to pull the trigger before next fiscal year, whether it comes out of fees that they collect or whatever, we might have to have a discussion on how that might be paid for. So that might be something that's coming up here in the next few weeks or months or so.
If we had an idea on kind of what that was going to cost, that would be great.
Yeah, I've got a few demos lined up and we'll get some costs here in the next couple of weeks and kind of look at what. Because there's places that'll do the payment of the, like, if you were just wanting to offer online payments for like the passes and stuff. And those are typically free. They'll just, you know, take a 3% whatever from the transaction. But when you start getting into actual management and reservation software and that's when it'll be like anything else and they'll charge you a yearly fee or whatever for it. So, and then the only other big thing coming up is we've been working, you know, we've been working on trying to get that repeater on snowbank change for the road department because the radios that they're using can't be serviced anymore. And the equipment is mostly in and that'll, hopefully we'll be getting that done here in the next month or two as well.
Where are you at on the ticketing program? And you said you were close to pulling the trick around our new ticketing program?
Yeah.
Is that going to be training for all of the staff or?
It's pretty straightforward. I'm going to send out an email. It goes over kind of the changes, but. I'm hopeful that it's simple enough that it'll be pretty straightforward.
Okay. I had another question come up and I'll just try and catch up with you later today sometime.
Okay, that's fine.
And clarify what people are asking me, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Andy?
I'm good. Thank you, Jerry. Good luck on the mayor title.
Director Bingham.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have anything thought provoking for you guys this morning, but I do have an action item. We've got a person that we want to appoint, have you guys appoint to the groomer advisory board. She's the current president for the Cougar Mountain Club and she's been coming to our meetings for the last couple of months. So I guess starting that out, if you guys would be so kind to appoint Lori Ellis to the groomer advisory board, that'd be great.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Lori Ellis, is that right?
It is.
To the groomer advisory committee board.
Has it been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, there was a lot. Rick always had a ton of questions about the budget down there. So hopefully she understands the budget and how we do things.
Yeah, she's been involved with the program. She's very active with the club. We've been working together on, you know, North Fork Championship, some upgrades for Wellington Snow Park. And, you know, they did just contribute some money towards some of the upkeep down there as well. So she's very aware of what the program is. As far as updates, I just wanted to let you guys know we do have the snowmobile ordinance hearing next week. Not a lot of comments have come in. I think Director Herrick got one set of comments and then I've had two. And the ones that I've gotten have been, "Thank you for doing something." So I think that'll be a pretty smooth hearing for you guys.
I hope so. I got one from Jerry Icolet today that was like,
Yeah.
"And we need to sit down and talk." Yeah, it was, it was surprising. I thought that had been pretty well ironed out.
We did too. Can't make everybody happy all the time. It does look like we're going to have a little bit more space for long-term parking at Francie Wallace. We went through and put to the list of the people they're going to have parking up at Francie Wallace. And so I think that might alleviate some of the issues that the Icolets were feeling.
Yeah, I think, you know, the more I thought about it, it was like, long-term, we're talking like the people that live back there in the back areas, that the long-term people were talking about.
Businesses that operate up there. The mine. We've got a bunch of slots that the miners are using.
It's kind of, why aren't we putting all the long-term down at Rush Creek? Because they're going to park, they're going to stay, they're not leaving.
And so this year, that is exactly what the ordinance changed.
Changing that down to there.
So we're going to have businesses up at Francie Wallace. There's one row of long-term business parking in the miners and then have all the homeowners and overnight users, whether they're going up for two nights or multiple nights, they'll be down at Rush Creek, so.
That makes more sense.
And open up a lot of space for day users at Francie Wallace.
I think if we alleviate somewhere, somewhere down the road, getting a snowmobile path between the two parking lots, man, would that help?
Yeah.
We just got to figure out how the heck we can do that.
Well, and that's our priority for this season is we're going to try to keep a lane open between the two parking lots on the east side of Warren Wagon Road. It would be wide enough for snowmobiles and still have two lanes of traffic. We've got a meeting with IDL tomorrow. We're going to look at a couple of trees that we want to take out. I think they're actually in the county right away, but we're going to discuss that with IDL. And then we're actually looking at the Francie Wallace Parking Lot Expansion Proposal tomorrow with them, which has been over a year in the making. So having that done for next year will change the dynamic up there quite a bit.
That's going to, that's going to really help.
Yeah.
Our county just keeps growing and it's hard to accommodate and keep up with it.
More people coming, you know, for all kinds of recreation. We just need more parking and we need more opportunities to spread those folks out. So, yeah.
Are we still working on a campground at Boulder, Boulder Lake or is that kind of just?
Jumping all over the place. We're working on a trailhead facility in a parking area for grant cycle that's coming up in January that we would apply for. I think that grant is actually going to be partially funded by Yamaha if we get the grant.
Oh.
And that deadline, I believe, is in December.
Okay.
So we're applying for a grant to do a parking lot and a trailhead at the Boulder Turkey Track for better, lack of better description, on the Boulder Road.
How's Emily doing?
Emily's doing great.
I was very impressed with her during the infrastructure meeting. She had some really thoughtful input.
Yep, she's jumped right in. One of the things I was going to mention is we've got her working on a bunch of her projects right now. I kind of asked her to start looking at some of the other pieces of the ordinances that we have that pertain to recreation, since when we looked at the snowmobile ordinance, it kind of opened a can of worms. So she's looking into some of those and we'll have a couple of changes that we'll be bringing to you guys later this year. She's also giving our recreation pages on the website a deep dive. She's got access to the website. I had a training with Tamara yesterday or the day before, Monday. And she's ready to start looking at some changes. That's going to be a focus for our meeting on Monday with our Recreation Advisory Board as well.
Perfect.
So trying to update that information.
Do we have a strategic plan?
We are waiting on a front cover photo.
Neil, go take a picture.
Dogs, dogs and families are the priorities. A scenic photo with dogs and a family involved. So that's some pretty high standards we're trying to achieve there. I did just want to say a couple of other things. We're working with Perpetua right now to try to figure out how the Warm Lake grooming is going to take place. We need to schedule a meeting with Chris Bentley, the district ranger, as soon as possible. I sent him an email yesterday. The plan is, is that there's going to be probably shared use. This is going to be part of the road development agreement that'll come out later, but there'll be shared use on the Warm Lake Road over Warm Lake Summit up to Landmark with hard closures for avalanche conditions and high-traffic times. What that means for the grooming department is we need to have a base at the top where we can park the cat. We need to be able to keep the cat warm so that it, you know, is warmed up and ready to go and the deer doesn't gel or the def doesn't gel up. So we're looking at a generator system that would be parked in a Conex box at the top up by Warm, uh, Landmark that Perpetua is paying for, you know, and basically we just need to get the okay from the Forest Service to have a temporary setup up there.
All the way up at Landmark.
Yeah, yeah. And there's going to be a parking lot up there as well.
So they're going to keep that road open for vehicle traffic.
They're going to keep it open for not only mine traffic, but for passenger or public. There's a lot of details that need to be worked out in that road development agreement. And we've got some pretty good recommendations as far as signage, closures, what kind of closures would occur on that road.
So they're asking to put that road development agreement on next week?
Okay.
So if there's something in that, we need to identify that now.
I have not had a chance to talk to Jeff at length about that, so I'll put that on my agenda as far as talking to him.
I want to talk about that sooner than later, yep.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of moving parts with just that component. Keeping the Warm Lake Road open.
I remember when we were talking last week about the Clear Creek. We were talking with these guys, DF Development. That one route was, takes forever to get around.
It's extra 10 miles.
Extra 10 miles. That's a long ways.
Yep. So we're going to groom that this, this winter either way.
Oh, we are.
We'll still have the parking lot down at our normal spot, you know, where the maintenance has stopped in the past. And then, you know, the options that were on the table, the parking lot up higher, so if people didn't want to take that longer route, that they could drive up into the DF property and park up near the top of that at the Forest Service boundary. Conveniently, that's where that 417 Skunk Creek Road comes back down and connects to Clear Creek Road. So we would have an access for the groomer itself to come out, you know, and then just basically drive across the parking area if they agree to the parking area.
Right.
And then drive on up into Cougar Rock and up in that neighborhood.
Bet you most people are going to want to do that instead of doing that long 10 mile.
It's scenic, so I think if you're going, if you're just going to go ride your snowmobile at Warm Lake in that area, chances are you're going to want to cut that 10 miles off. But if you're going for the ride and the tour, then it's a really neat loop.
Yeah.
So, yeah, anyways, just going to give you one other update real quick on some of the grants that we are applying for. Like I said, we're thinking grants. We've got four grants that we're focusing on right now. It'll be coming up in the IDPR grant cycle in January. We've met with Ken Schlegel a couple of times now. Emily and I are splitting that workload up, but we're looking at some pretty significant improvements to Wellington Campground and the warming hut. And then also significant improvements up at Francie Wallace, including a parking lot expansion and upgrades inside our warming hut for solar activity, probably through Starlink and then a camera system. So cameras would help the sheriff's department with enforcement in the parking lots. It allows us to see how busy the parking lots are. It also will help our maintenance staff when we need to do more maintenance. And obviously it's a security feature as well, so. And, uh, obviously it's a security feature as well, so. Working towards that next year and then, uh, the Boulder Road Trailhead that I mentioned, it's gonna be a. Nice improvement to have a real parking area up there, that's just getting busier and busier. Than the Cobarton parking area and. We have a piece of ground that we were trying to decide if we could lease or, um. Work with landowner on and. The Department of Parks and Rec, Idaho Department of Parks and Rec would like to see something long-term. A solution that doesn't involve a year-to-year lease on that piece of ground, and so one of the possible solutions that. I'd like to bring to you guys or at least have you start to consider is maybe an exchange of, it's point six acres. On private property right now, um, that we could potentially look at an exchange with some of the property that's north of the Cobarton Bridge. That we do not use and we cannot develop, we cannot put a parking lot there, it's essentially wetlands. The landowner right now is grazing his cows on that property. So it seems like it might be an easy thing to do, um.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It seems like it would be a good solution. So just something for you guys to think about and we're, we're gonna explore that more this week and see if we can come to an agreement.
Perfect.
It's somebody we know.
It is. Yeah, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Dave. Who'll have a check?
Good morning. So some of the big things right now is the fire working group had got canceled, so I had to cancel that meeting due to, um, some of our big partners not. Being able to do a lot of outside meetings, um, so a lot of the fire guys are still working, um, but their initiative from their, um. Supervisors is to not do any outside meetings, so unfortunately I'm gonna have to push that back to hopefully December, J- January. Um, but, um, to be determined on that one, um, I was able to update the GNA agreement to include that personnel. Um, but with the furlough, uh, I don't know when that will actually go through the system to get it updated. Um, the process for that is basically I submit, um, recommendations for what those modifications are. Forest Service looks at it, their grants and agreements looks at it and sends it back to us when they approve it, and then I send it to legal. And then it'll go to the commissioner, so it's still, could be a couple of months out. Um, so as of right now, I have not submitted or have not put any positions on, um, online to. Fill because I would like that to be able to be filled back to the GNA agreement. Um, unless you guys see that I should hire someone right now, I am still gonna wait until that gets changed, um. There is no real off-season, but things are kinda slowing down a little bit with implementation, so, um, I do think. Even wait until January, February, um, is sufficient enough. Unless you guys see something different. Um, I am working with IDL with the MOUs for the PRA and HFR grant. Um, those are the typical MOUs that we've always gotten for those grants, um, they're just. Needed shape files and they should be sending that over in the next couple of weeks, I'll get that off to legal and then, um, off to commissioners as well. Um, I do have another MOU with All Ants Partnership for the twenty thousand dollars for outreach. That one's a little bit unknown, so we'll see what that one looks like, but I will submit everything through legal. Um, but that one will be different than, um, some of the other ones we've had in the past. Um, I will be doing a discussion panel for the Economic Summit for Lindsay Harris. Um, she's trying to focus on regional infrastructure initiatives for citizens. And she asked me to be one of the, um, people on the panel, so I will be helping with that. On November thirteenth, um, I do have a meeting with Tamrac next Monday. Uh, with the HFR grant that I applied for, my main focal point was Tamrec Resort. And surrounding areas, so I'm gonna meet with Tamrac to see what their, um, project goals are and what their mitigation, um. Incentives are and see if they kind of align with whatever that grant can accomplish and kinda go from there, um, but we're just starting the discussion, they've had a. Bunch of turnover, I was dealing with another individual that, um. Left and went to another company, so I am kinda starting with scratch for kinda project areas, ideas, all those things. But those discussions are starting to be had. I will be attending P and Z this Thursday, um, as there is quite a bit of ordinances that are getting changed, not quite a bit, but there's two main ones. So the subdivision fire plan, um, one of the big things the fire one, working group wanted to include. Was my position to review all the subdivision plans and actually start making sure that they're getting implemented, right now in the ordinance, it says that the. Fire districts, um, are the ones that approve those plans and make sure that their, um, their mitigation is completed. And so truly now that this is an internal position, um, their recommendation was making sure that. Those districts coincide with, um, the county. For approval, and then the other thing that is getting proposed is driveway ordinances, and that's more for the fire departments. So they will be checking those driveways with slopes, um, grade, all those things, they've noticed. Recently that some of the driveways, um, didn't meet some codes, so that they're wanting the county to adopt those, so those are the two main big changes. In the next future, we will start working on like wooey zones and changing building codes within wooey zones potentially. Um, as we see that we live in a wildfire crisis area, um. Blaine County has already accomplished this where they created zones and if you're within the Wildland Urban Interface. There's certain more, there's more requirements for building, more requirements for your home ignition zones. Um, just to hold people more accountable when they're building within their urban interface, um.
With building materials for the most part.
Both, yeah.
Different siding.
Different siding, which it seems like a lot of people already are starting to do that just because of insurance. And then the county already has a roofing ordinance, so we already on top of that where some other counties don't, but we do. Um, so it would just be bolstering more the building, which. Will be a big discussion, um, so that will be something in the near future that we'll start working on. And then my plan is to bring it to the strategic, strategic planning. As well, um, because obviously there's gonna be quite a few, um, different departments that need to be involved in that. And I've already been talking to Sina and Annette, um, on those future plans as well. And then one of the big things that I've been working on is working with Mackenzie to create a strategic plan for wildfire prevention. And so she came up with a, uh, overall goal for my department. And the fire working group, cause I do have two different, um, Facebook pages, so we're kinda thinking about consolidating them into one. Um, just so that doesn't confuse the, the messaging and more going towards the fire working group, um, Facebook instead of the valid county firewise. Um, just so that landowners have one. Profile to go to, and then we're gonna create, um, a bunch of messaging that all is cohesive, same colors, same wording. Um, so I've been having a couple of meetings with her, um, we're gonna start getting some of that going, I'm pretty excited about that one actually, so. And those are some of the big things.
Yeah, I was talking to Mara this morning about the Forester. Yeah, it's, uh, I'd like to see it move quicker than it is, but. It's gonna go a little slow.
Yeah, and then Forester, we met with Forester last Thursday, um, Ken Holen out on the Lake Fork site just to show him around the ground. Um, Jeff and Terry are. Coincide and agree on the location, it's just whether Forester actually wants to use that location, so really the ball's kind of in his court. Of if that's a good location, if it is, then create an MOU, which we already have a draft MOU that. Um, us have already been looking at to be able to propose to you, so trying to get the directors on board with that MOU. Obviously it still needs to go through legal, cause I'm sure there's stuff missing, um, that we're not seeing and then going from there. But he didn't want me to submit it to legal yet, um, so we're kind of still in that draft MOU stage to see what he wants to propose. Um, and add and then kinda go from there, so to be determined on timelines for that, I know he said he wanted to start getting this UP. Done this month, but I don't see that feasible, um.
And is it just on the one site for now then?
That's my recommendation, his goal is to do multiple, which if it's on county ground, then obviously we can put. Multiple locations in a MOU, um, but I think this goal, this. Plan is so robust and so big and it's so unknown how much material we're going to. Get him in a year that I would recommend doing one site, um. But that's just my opinion, I do know his goal is to have a bunch of little sites, which I do think would be beneficial for landowners, so they don't have to drive to. Lake Fork to drop off, I do, I do think that would be highly used, but we do need one big location for all that commercial. For all those big timber lot clearing type stuff.
I can see it, you know, having one down here on this side of Donner. One there at the Lake Fork site, you know. Me, that makes good logistics.
I think some of the complications specifically with that is what he's proposing and what I recommended for him to propose. Um, is that they would install a weight station and they would re- retain that cost of what the county already charges. So it'd still have to be county commissioner approval for what that charges, is my recommendation, not saying that has to happen, but. And having two of tho- those locations, I don't know if he would want that, I think he'd want more like residential ways, cause that's the. Commissioners already offer that free to the citizens, so I don't want that to change, I'm not saying it sh- can't. Um, but those are some of the big things I've noticed in those MOUs, so. To be determined on that, but the biggest thing is, is the Woody Innovation Grant is done. Um, so in this next fiscal year, uh, I, if this doesn't come to fruition sooner than later, um. Me and Terry are working with Ken to kinda look at some other grants to help kinda fund some of that. Um, change and cover some of that cost, uh, in the past, we've had a grant to help offset some of those costs.
Well, maybe we should just do the grant.
That's the hard part, is if you didn't apply for it the year before, it takes a whole year to get awarded grants, so. We almost have to find grants that are easier to get within a short amount of time, um, but that can, probably can talk to some of that stuff. I do know some of these federal grants, it usually takes a year to two years to be actually awarded the money.
And by then, if that thing happens, we wouldn't need the grant.
If it happened before May, yes, we wouldn't need it, but then you'd have to install the station. Put a weight station in, so I mean, there's a lot of steps, um, theoretically. You could cover it if we got all of that stuff figured out prior to then, yes. Thanks.
Thanks, Mara.
So our next session is not until ten thirty, I was asking Ryan if he wanted to move up the executive from the eleven fifteen. I need to check and see the availability, um.
Is Claire Lawler gonna be here?
I'm sorry?
Uh, they're appearing virtually.
Oh, Fisher Thompson. When is the Economic Summit?
November thirteenth.
Where's it gonna be this year?
It's at the Celebration Center at Elk Creek. Can they, can we take a quick break till we figure out?
Absolutely.
They need us.